Good evening and welcome to the September 25th, 2017 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two discussion topics. But before we get to them, we're going to start off with an announcement. Yvette, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gaithersburg residents will cast their ballots for Mayor and two City Council members on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. The distribution of absentee ballot applications and ballots will begin on Friday, October 6th. The last day to register to vote in the 2017 city election is Monday, October 23rd. To confirm registration, please contact the Montgomery County Board of Elections at 240-777-VOTE. For complete election information, go to www.gaithersburgmd.gov/government/elections or contact Elections Clerk Lauren Klinger at 301-258-6310 or email Cite elections@gaithersburgmd.gov.
Thank you. So, we have two discussion topics. The first being a presentation on energy benchmarking. The second being presentation on the results of the city's urban forest study. So, let's start with the first discussion. And we have with us Diane Back, our Sustainability Coordinator. She's going to lead us through it. Diane.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am, as was mentioned, Diane Back with the City Manager's Office and I'm the Sustainability Coordinator. To get started, before you is an overview of the presentation I'll be making tonight. I'll be providing some information about benchmarking and then we'll detail two different programs. So, to get started, why do we benchmark? Some communities have adopted benchmarking and transparency laws to encourage the building sector to make better energy decisions by reviewing data. As you can imagine, there are benefits to making energy upgrades to buildings and to conserving energy. These include cost benefits, improvements to air quality. You might have noticed that today was an air quality alert code orange for ozone and also reduction in the carbon footprint. These ordinances do not require energy improvements to be made to the buildings, just that the energy data be reported. When the data is reported, building owners and managers are able to see how their building is performing compared to other buildings of similar size and use. Of note, on this slide, this is from the Institute for Market Transformation. These are jurisdictions within the United States with varying levels of benchmarking laws. All of these require or include benchmarking on public buildings generally over a certain square footage and certain of them require commercial building benchmarking such as Montgomery County requires, while others of them also include multifamily buildings such as the law in Washington DC. There is notation on the bottom right of this slide that tells you which communities do which type of benchmarking. The one for Salt Lake City, I think that predates the current legislation in Salt Lake. For the next slide. This is from Berkeley National Laboratory. They completed research supported by an office within the Department of Energy. This was published in April 2017. And to summarize the report, they recommend tracking of multiple data types related to energy and to non-energy impacts with annual reports, including summaries of statistics, performance metrics, and identified areas of opportunity in the building stock. They also include, as one of their mentioned best practices, providing a range of support services and complimentary programs at the local level. These could include user-friendly resources, online resources, webinars, in-person trainings, establishment of help centers, and additional support efforts during certain times such as at the approaching compliance date. Also, the creation of national and regional help desk to encourage data consistent consistency across jurisdictions and to reduce implementation costs. That's sort of more of the Cadillac of the program if you were to do all of those things. A brief overview of Montgomery County's law. It was adopted in April 2014. It requires the county, public buildings, and owners of certain buildings to benchmark the energy use of, this is only non-residential properties, that exceed 50,000 square feet in size and greater in Portfolio Manager, which is an Energy Star federal program. The building's data must also be verified by a, what they call, recognized data verifier. And then that person reports to the county for public disclosure that began June 1st, 2016 and then is annually thereafter. Also, the benchmarking law for the county specifies exemptions and waivers for buildings. If a building meets certain requirements, it would not need to be benchmarked. If a building has 10% or more of its space used for specified use types, then it would not need to be benchmarked. Also, if the building had certain type of hardships, vacancies 50% or greater within a calendar year or construction, demolition, buildings, building owners can also apply for waivers for those certain calendar year or years. County stock would have to be alerted to exemptions and waivers they prefer as soon as possible. Montgomery County is one of two jurisdictions that require verification of data reported under the benchmarking law. And that's a QA QC process that double checks that the data is entered correctly, similar to an accountant reviewing taxes before you would then submit them to the IRS. Let's see, it's more of, moving more towards an industry standard to do it this way and ensures that the county's working with high-quality data and also that building owners are making those energy decisions with good data. They recently, I don't know if you saw the article about Washington DC, they had a little trouble in one of their, you know, their first years of data reporting. And they mentioned in the newspaper article that they were going to focus more in subsequent years on accuracy. This slide shows the requirements for who can complete the data verification. So, moving on to the Salt Lake City example to give a bit of compare and contrast to the Montgomery County model ordinance. This law was recently passed and is being phased in with the first requirement not being until May 1st, 2018 for city-owned properties and with governed buildings or the private sector requirements starting on May 1st, 2020. This law is a step by Salt Lake to meet their goal of an 80% reduction in emissions by 2040 and also 100% renewable energy supply by 2032.
So, on that slide, it says governed buildings. Does that mean municipal buildings?
I think that's their terminology for private sector.
For private sector, okay.
Right. I guess they say it differently in Salt Lake.
So, they actually go to 25,000 square feet as their starting point, their threshold for reporting?
Yes, so it's a little bit, a little bit different than the way Montgomery County has set theirs up.
Yeah.
And as you can see, right above that, the 50,000 square feet, which when Montgomery County phased theirs in, it has since passed, that time has passed. They also had a kind of like a tier one was the larger buildings and then the tier twos. Now, it's all of the ones that are 50,000 and up.
So, does the Salt Lake City benchmarking include multifamily or residential buildings as well? Or is it all?
I believe, let me go back to that slide. Although that slide sounded predates, yes, yes.
The map has, Salt Lake City is one that's just benchmarking public buildings.
Right, because they just passed it. And that Institute for Market Transformation, their latest map, right, they haven't changed their mapping.
Alright.
Yep. Okay, I believe they do not do, okay, so it's all commercial buildings above 25,000. I believe they don't do multifamily. Let me find my place again. So, analysis from Salt Lake City's Department of Sustainability and the nonprofit Center, City Energy Project show that their ordinance, they estimate that it will cut 29 tons of nitrogen oxides, which is a key contributor for them for their wintertime air pollution troubles from the air each year. And then they believe that more gains will be realized if building owners voluntarily tune up their buildings and/or install new equipment. So, I believe I'm on this slide here. It shows some of the exemptions that they have included, just like Montgomery County has some exemptions as well. And to summarize what we've gone over so far, of note, these laws are intended to spur market transformation. Additional benefits include supporting the local economy in terms of construction, construction and engineering trades and access to data about the city's existing building stock. An analogy for the laws are informational labels on food products that compare their nutritional content to an established benchmark. The content enables awareness, which can then lead to healthy choices and modification by the food producers to increase the healthiness of the food product to gain more consumer acceptance. So, leading to options for the city moving forward, should the Mayor and Council be interested in benchmarking and transparency for the city of Gaithersburg? These include opting into Montgomery County's ordinance. I should mention that the city of Rockville has chosen into, chosen to opt into the county's benchmarking ordinance. Part of the reasoning stated by Rockville for opting in was that they believe or felt that requiring benchmarking across a region's building stock encourages buildings to remain competitive, which in turn makes cities and states more economically competitive. If the city were to opt into the county's program, the county would administer the program, ensuring accuracy of submittals and providing office hours, learning opportunities, and outreach. The county sees the benefit in one standard being applied throughout the county and municipalities and across the municipalities. Another option would be to create a city-specific ordinance. The county ordinance, as was mentioned, does not address multifamily buildings. This is an area where there could be a great benefit to renters in terms of saving money on their energy bills. Lastly, another option for the city would be to focus on incentivizing energy efficiency and conservation programs. That brings me to the end of this presentation. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks, Diane. So, in terms of if we were to go forward with something, I think it does make sense to be consistent with the county for a number of reasons. If there's the possibility that the county would help administer, then that would make sense. It also makes sense as, in terms of simplicity for property owners, that there's not some island in the middle of county that, where, where there's a different standard or perhaps no standard. I am curious about the, the impact, the dollar impact. And I can, I can see the environmental, potential environmental impact and, and how it might incentivize a property owner to make improvements and, and give perhaps consumers, potential tenants, something to look at as well. But I'm curious about, let's say you had a 50,000 square foot commercial building. Do we have some sense of what the annual cost would be to get this data verified by one of these experts?
Right, I'm not sure of the cost of the data verification, you know, what that would cost. If, I'm, I'm thinking that most people would already be using someone that is doing work for the building. Like, in general, a lot of buildings are already benchmarking for their own purposes. So, it's more the second step of reporting it to the county.
So, is it your feeling that a lot, that this is not, this wouldn't potentially be a big impact because people are doing this already?
For certain, certain entities. I feel like for some others, maybe some strip malls, it might be a little bit of a burden, especially to kick it off. That's where the county could really step in and help in that they have those office hours and, you know, there's, there's still, I imagine, would be some impact. It would be a new program for them.
Would it apply, oh, sorry. Would it apply to, it's just commercial, it's not nonprofits, right? So, for example, we're not going to have the fairgrounds.
I don't think they have 50,000 square feet of the enclosed buildings.
Yeah, well, that was.
It's non-residential, I'd have to look more closely to see if that includes nonprofits, if they would be characterized as commercial, but they'd have to be over 50,000 square feet.
Okay. Ryan, I think.
I just wanted to make a sort of a comment, piggybacking off of what the mayor said about the fee. I mean, I think you have to think about this in terms of the, the overall net savings because even if there is a cost to manage the program on the part of a property owner, there's also all the savings. And if you look at the, the slide in the presentation about, you know, impact evaluations, you see a fairly significant cumulative decrease when it comes to energy cost savings. Now, when you're talking about a triple-net lease that a commercial property owner might pass those costs on anyway, so you could argue they're not really directly benefiting from those savings if they're going to be passing utility costs on to a tenant anyway. But if their space becomes more competitive and more attractive because it's less expensive to rent because those utility costs are lower, they may fill more square footage in their unit or in their property and they may be able to attract, you know, more tenants and maybe even raise rent even though they've got lower utility costs kind of to offset. So, I think that we have to sort of think in the big picture that there may be some other economic benefits to property owners, which offset, more than offset, some of the hopefully marginal costs involved in, in doing the benchmarking. It's just something to consider because these things are all sort of connected. The other thing I wanted to throw out there and see what staff thought about this is just assuming for argument's sake that we would want to do a benchmarking program for multifamily, but not pass up on the opportunity to take advantage of the county operating a program for commercial properties in our city. Would there potentially be a hybrid option where we could say, we're opting into the county's program? We'll let the county enforce and manage its program for commercial properties and other properties that fall within that program, but the city could have its own separate additional program just for multifamily? Just throwing that out there, not saying it's something that we would necessarily want to propose.
I would definitely talk to the city attorney's office about that, but I think that's, that's a unique solution.
Neil.
So, by opting into the county's program, would there be a cost directly to the city or to the landlords?
No, they're happy to do it. They, they, like you sort of mentioned, they want the regulations to be the same throughout the county so that property owners that own buildings in Rockville and Silver Spring and the city have the same requirements and aren't, you know, learning to do different things in different places.
And are there filing fees to the landlords or the building owners for these sorts of?
The Energy Star Portfolio Manager Program is free and that is what is uploaded to the county. And there's no fee to turn in your data that I'm aware of.
You go, Neil.
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, I was going to ask about multifamily, but you guys have already touched on it a little bit. I think that, given the housing stock in the, in the city, there's, there's a significant amount of multifamily. And I know that a lot of the multifamily buildings tend to have windows that are not the most energy efficient. It would seem like an area where there could be significant opportunity for improvement. I mean, in terms of utility bills for the residents as well as energy efficiency for the city.
Definitely.
Mike.
Yeah, you know, the multifamily, we have a lot of new construction. If we look at our town centers at Crown and Spectrum and even Kentland. So, to, I mean, those are big multifamily buildings. They're modern. I think in terms of building, they were trying to use as many green elements as they could. I think the idea that this is, that I think a lot of property owners are already benchmarking their properties for the purpose of, of, you know, retailing them or selling, you know, bringing in tenants is important. So, they're probably already doing a lot of this anyway. The one, so, for the city, in terms of looking at our own buildings, we really only have one building that, that fits under this category, right?
Correct. It would just be the Activities, the Activities Center. It's the only one that has a compilation of buildings that exceed 50,000 square feet.
So, our new Civic Building, if we, how, how big is that one? The, across the street.
Forty-two thousand feet.
It's not 50.
Forty-two, okay, so it's not 50. Yeah, you know, I, I think this is, it's an important sales point for any property owners. You know, basically, the first dollar saved is from efficiency and conservation. This allows people to do that. You know, I, I think one of the lessons we learned when we passed our green building ordinance is that we were worried about resistance from the development community. And it turns out that the development community ended up being in favor of it, supporting those that, that came to testify actually supported the ordinance. And it turns out that having a LEED-certified building was a selling point for, for those property owners because corporate entities wanted to be in buildings that were efficient because of reduced costs, but also it demonstrates their own corporate consciousness about energy conservation. So, you know, I, I think this is a good idea. The fact that we can kind of, that we can go with the county program at no cost is a, is a good one. I think we should consider developing this, a plan for, for multifamily within the city. Maybe we could pilot that throughout. I, I understand why the county would want to stay away from that. But I think, you know, in terms of so much new development happening, multifamily part of the market throughout the county, it would probably be a good thing to do that. It's all new construction. They have to do it anyway to let their tenants know, their residents know what their energy costs are. So, I think that, that it might be a, a good thing that we could, it might be something for us to model that maybe the county could adopt it as well. So, that's all I got.
Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Diane. Question, do we know what stock, the commercial stock within the city would fit under the county's kinds of this?
We did a really rough look at it and it's somewhere around 100 properties. However, some of them may fall outside of the exceptions. So, it could drop down to 80 properties or something like that. I believe Rockville had about 113, something, 120, something like that.
Is it something that staff could fairly easily do a survey to figure out, are they collecting this data? What kind of burden it would be on them?
I am going to be speaking at the next Economic Development Meeting that Tom Larnigan hosts. So, I can ask at that, at that meeting and then also, like you said, do a more formal survey.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, the, I think, the adopting the county's benchmark, particularly if it's zero cost to the city, the county's going to manage it and adds uniformity across the county, it's, it's an interesting idea. I think we could also take the additional step with our own buildings. Even if we're going to go below 50,000. It's our own stock. It's an easy decision for us to make and we can assess what, what the cost would be.
We'll say on that front, it would be far simpler once the, the city acquires the energy software they're looking into because that would make the benchmarking far simpler on our, on our behalf for our own buildings. But just to do one building, the Activities Center would not, you know, hand entering would not be difficult for one property.
Well, I, I'd be interested in looking at the feasibility of measuring the city's entire carbon footprint, meaning our, our public buildings footprint. And then I guess like, some questions on the last bullet point. The, the non-regulatory programs to encourage incentives.
Sure.
As energy efficiency and conservation. Do you have any thoughts as to what's your, where you're going with that?
That was more of an option outside of doing transparency, you know, outside of doing the county or the city benchmarking and transparency. And probably an entire work session could be devoted just to that. So, if you're interested in delving more into that, I could come back with some ideas for different kinds of programs. But I believe there'd be a cost attached with those because, you know, most incentivizing programs are offering money to do upgrades and, and I'm not sure of the funding source for that city.
I mean, you have programs that people are talking about, like solar cooperatives are popping up and other really good innovative green ideas.
And we will be participating in another Montgomery County Solar Co-op starting in October.
Good.
So, I, I think Bullet Point One seems like something we can do off the bat. I would also encourage looking at our own footprint. I'm interested in the incentives at some later date. And, and it does pique my interest to consider at least the multifamilies, what the cost would be, how much we're talking about as far as buildings that are impacted, just the structure for that because it would be existing outside of the county's structure.
True.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yvette, did you want to add or?
I'm good.
Okay.
One more.
Go ahead, please.
Question, on multifamily, are we talking about apartments or condos or both? Do we have any strong feelings?
I think it would be both, but it could be up for discussion.
Yeah, just thinking about common ownership communities and condos, that, that might be a burden on them. That wouldn't be a burden, less of a burden on a commercial, commercially-owned property.
Right, and I'm happy to look at some of those programs that do offer, like Washington DC has multifamily component to their law and see what the thresholds are for those, if they include condominiums or if they do not, I can, I can find that out.
Yeah, some of the difference in construction and design was in the, the older multifamily. They have a, a common, basically HVAC electrical grid, so they're not sub-metered. The newer construction, we see a lot of sub-metered residences. So, you know, there's no incentive for, for a resident of a, you know, a common system to, to conserve much because, you know.
I know, it's a unique system.
There's a flat rate across, but, but once you do sub-metering, then everybody's energy costs are restricted to that residence. So, still, it's still a selling point. Whether you're a property owner of a condominium unit within a multifamily building or whether you're, you know, a multifamily rental facility as well.
I was just thinking about the, the burden on the homeowners association of trying to gather and compile all that information might be, I mean, I'd be, I'd, I'd want to look into it first before we go too far. I mean, it's a good cause, but, you know, those organizations have a hard enough time doing what they need to do already.
Diane, another question I have would be if we, if for the commercial properties, we were to go and adopt the county system, I'd want it to be, I'd want to make some sort of agreement with the county that they would share information exactly about the Gaithersburg properties so that we could benchmark ourselves and not just rely on an aggregate average.
Right, and that was a mentioned concern of the city of Rockville. I'm not sure how they resolved it, but that is, that's a good question.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic. I'm not anticipating much because we have sort of a light crowd and a very professional crowd tonight. Okay, not seeing anybody. And Diane, I'm sure you feel guided at this point.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, then we will move on to the next one. Thank you very much. And we have Rob Robinson, our Long Range Planning Manager, and Andrew Benjamin, Environmental Planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this evening, we're before you to present the results of the city's urban forestry study. I'm going to begin with a little bit of background and turn it over to Andrew to go more into detail about the various facets of the study and then come back and discuss sort of next steps and show you an example of our Arbor Pro Asset Management System. So, going all the way back when we adopted, when the council adopted the environment and sustainability element, it contained two recommendations. One was to conduct an inventory and review of the forest conservation easements within the city. And the other one was to conduct a street tree inventory, including all street trees regardless of ownership. This was quickly followed up in FY 2016 Strategic Plan with an action item to actually do these. The council authorized us funding on October 5th, 2015. The study was to include an inventory of all the existing street trees, including species size and condition, a review of all the areas under a Category 1 Forest Conservation Easement, and a description of the urban forestry elements on city facilities. Just to make note, this was funded through our Forest Conservation Fund, so it did not come out of the General Fund. And the study took two spring planting seasons to complete, namely because for some of the qualitative measures, you need fully leafed-out trees, you need the full herbaceous layer just to check, truly see all the invasive, so you really don't do it heading into fall and winter. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew to begin discussing the various details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the first section of this, this study that I'll be discussing is the street tree inventory. And as you can see, we have approximately 12,000 street trees within the city of Gaithersburg. And for every tree that was captured in this study, there was location, species, condition, and size that were taken down. Of those 2,000 or approximate 2,000 street trees, about 10,000 are on streets owned and maintained by the city of Gaithersburg. So, using that species data, we're able to create a measure for genetic diversity. So, using that species data, we're able to create a measure for genetic diversity. Genetic diversity is important because it can be, it is essentially a measure of resiliency. Resiliency in the sense that it minimizes any, it minimizes damage when there's an exotic pest that is introduced, introduced into the country, into the region, into the city. This is our, this is our means for hedging our bets and protecting the investment that we put into our street trees. So, the first, the measure of this genetic diversity is on the genus level. And so, the genus being the category, the next broader category above species level. So, white oak might be an example of a specific species and then oaks generally are that genus level that we're discussing here. The ideal genus diversity is 20%. So, that means no one genus is more than 20% of the entire street tree population. Looking at the street trees in the city of Gaithersburg, we have the maple genus slightly above that ideal, 20%, at 23%. And then the oak genus just below that threshold. The next level of genetic diversity that I'm discussing is species, is the species level of genetic diversity. And the reason that we do both is because we can, if we just looked at species diversity, we might be misled. We could, you can imagine a street tree population that has 10, 20 different types of oaks. And so, that looks good at a species level, but at a genus level, it would be one species, 100% oak. So, that's the distinction and that's also the difference in the threshold is, it's a different measure in a sense. So, again, we see that maple is at the top at 16% and that's 6% over the threshold. And with this species data, we know that red maple is the one that is pushing that maple genus over the threshold. And then just underneath the threshold, again, an oak comes in, pin oak. So, overall, the diversity is pretty good. We, we see that the maple is perhaps a little over abundant, but besides that, we're doing a good job.
So, Andrew, question, for both the genus and the species, the other category is by far the largest. What's the diversity within the other category? You're talking about one other or various others?
No, so, other is all other. So, I, I believe it's about 60 different genus types. And so, the ones that aren't shown in this pie chart were grouped into other. So, they're essentially at an insignificant rate. So, only a few percent, 1%, less than 1%, maybe even just one or two specimens of that species or genus.
Okay. So, if we're talking about a fungus that infects a specific genus that falls within the other category, we're not talking about a wipeout of half the trees?
No, no, yeah, yeah, exactly. It's, I mean, for example, with the genus, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, we're talking about 50 trees or 50 different types of genus types in that 26%.
And we're just talking about the city trees?
The street trees.
Street trees, right?
Yes.
So, okay. Sure, the responsibility the city did maintain?
Well, 10,000 of the, the 12,000 are the city's responsibility.
But that, there's a significant forest that is not private property that we haven't, that aren't part of this count, right?
Yes. So, this, these would only be in street right of ways.
Right.
So, then the next attribute I'm, I will be discussing is condition. As we can see, 50% of the city's street trees are good quality and 41 are fair quality. So, 91% are either good or fair and this is good news. It's inherently difficult to grow trees in an urban environment generally and especially difficult to grow trees along roadways. So, this is, this is positive. And then with the remaining 9%, the poor, the critical and the dead trees, we can begin to monitor them, monitor the trees in poor condition and then begin to remove the critical and dead trees.
And just to point something out, because this, this wasn't clear to me when I first looked at the chart, it took a little while, the excellent is actually not really visible here, right? It's in the 1%.
Less than 1%.
I was looking for the dark purple. I wasn't sure if that was 50%.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Mm-hmm. Well, an excellent essentially is a flawless tree and so that's why there's so few of them, so, but yeah.
So, when Pepco comes and mangles it, does that knock it down to the good category? Or does it still count as?
Maybe even worse.
Okay. But you can't, you can't have an excellent tree that's missing half its canopy, right? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, excellent is essentially flawless. And then the condition rating uses the system that, put out by the International Society of Arboretum Culture. So, it's not just biological health, whether the tree is diseased or growing well, but also the structure or form of the tree. So, if it's lopsided or improper branching unions and things like that. So, so this is the condition data again, giving, giving you a count, not just, not just the percent, so you have an idea of how many trees we're talking about in each category.
We have 19 that are excellent.
So, we could put, put a ribbon around each of the excellent?
I think we should have a marker or something.
Well, we have a location data, so we definitely could do that if we wanted to.
I think we just like hammer something into.
They will know all the ex.
Andrew just cringed as he said that.
The next attribute I'll be discussing is the size data that was taken. And so, size is diameter of the trunk and this is, this is used as a measure of age and so we can get the age distribution of the, of the city's street trees. The reason that this is valuable is that it ensures regeneration, knowing that there isn't the requisite number of tree, young trees out there currently to replace the older ones that are dying or being removed for other reasons, often coming in conflict with human activities. We have the trees to replace those and have a continuous canopy, street tree canopy. And looking at the data, we can see that we almost land right on the mark for the ideal of the youngest, the youngest size category. And so, this means that we have a good foundation of young trees and we should be able to maintain this distribution as long as we continue our planting program. And so, before I go on to the next part of the study, discussing the category, the category one forest conservation easements, just to summarize for the street tree inventory, the condition looks pretty good, the age distribution is very good. The only problem with the diversity is the abundance of maple, which can easily be addressed with planting programs and species selection at that level. So, the next part of the study concerns category one forest conservation easements. There are two types of forest conservation easements, category one and category two. Category one is the more restrictive type. Essentially, it's intended to be a undisturbed forest. Excuse me. For these easements, the following attributes were collected. The species composition, the dominant species, the size class of the trees, common understory, successional stage, the presence of invasives, and then the overall condition.
Can you explain understory for woody vine and herbaceous layers for the?
So, what, I suppose it's a forestry term, but it's the different strata or levels of, of growth in a forest. And so, there's the overstory, the understory, the herbaceous layer, the shrub layer, and woody vine. And depending on which methods you're, one's using, those are split into different categories. Some group woody vine and herbaceous or shrub herbaceous, but it's just one of the many levels of vegetation within a forest.
So, the understory could also include young trees, seedlings?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
That could possibly grow up into?
Yeah.
Big ones to replace the larger trees.
Exactly, yeah. And so, here's a map of the category one forest conservation easements that were included in the inventory. The study broke up these easements into smaller data plots. They basically were splitting them into coherent forest types. If looking at this map, you might think that it's, that we've missed some forests, but a lot of the forest is actually on city property and typically category one, or forest conservation easements do not occur on city property. So, the first attribute I'll discuss in this section is the genetic diversity and similar to the, it's, it's, this information is valuable in a similar way to the street tree inventory, but there are some crucial differences. This can't be used in exactly the same way because it's describing forest groups, several trees within a forest group versus individual trees that are planted on the street. Also, we have less control over which trees are growing in more natural areas just due to less intensive maintenance and the natural regeneration of plants. But again, we can see that maple is the most common and then oak follows it. This information can also be used to inform planting projects and in maintenance, we now know which trees are dominated by invasive species or which, how much of our forest will be affected if a pest specific, or a species specific pest comes around. The next two attributes are somewhat, are somewhat correlated. There's size class and then successional stage. And so, generally, the size class increases as the forest becomes more developed. Successional stage is essentially at which point in the spectrum of grass to mature forest, a forest is at any given moment. Oh, then the reason that that's important is when the forest gets to a mature state, that's when we reap the most ecological benefits from it. And so, looking at this map, we can see that approximately half of the category one forest conservation easements are mature forests. And the reason that we, we show both the, the percentage and then the, the map graphic is to show that even though the count, 50% says that it's immature, that doesn't take into account the size of each of the individual data plots. And actually, when we're talking about area, approximately, well, the majority are mature forest and that, like I said in the last slide, that's important because that's where we're reaping the most ecological benefits. So, this is just another layer of information when we, when it comes to managing these The condition of the easements was also recorded. High value forests or the high value, the high value forests are forests that are fully functioning, mature forests that don't need any help. They're, they've reached the, their, their peak. Medium forests are forests that could achieve this high level, this high value condition with, with intervention. And then the low value forests are forests that have several problems and would need significant intervention to reach that high value condition. So, here's the breakdown of the condition and we show it alongside of the invasive species presence because there is some correlation there. We found it particularly interesting that the high value forests were almost exactly the same percent as the forest with no invasive species present. And so, looking at that, it's about 50/50, high or medium quality or value and then low value and the same with invasive species presence. And so, this is again, another layer that show, that can inform management that perhaps if you, if we want to improve forest conservation or the forest conservation easement quality, we can set about removing invasive species. And here are the maps of the, the conservation easements by quality. And so, the green is high or medium and then the red is low quality. And this is the northern half of the city and then this is the southern half of the city. And so, before I go on to the next part of the study, just to summarize the forest conservation easement findings, it's, it's difficult to manage these areas. They're, they're, they're out of view and they're, they're much, they're more difficult to get to than a street tree, obviously. But we are, we have a good foothold and if we want to go into managing these, these areas, we have some good quality forests out there to build off of.
Is that something you'd recommend?
I mean, yeah.
It's something we actually have budgeted for and when we get to the next steps, we'll explain what we have in the works. So, are these reforestation opportunities then? Is that, that's as part of what you're going to tell us about, right?
And some of the enhancement, yes.
All right.
So, the final part of the, the study has to do with urban forestry assets on city facilities. And so, the, these areas were, the attributes for these areas were, that were recorded were species composition, dominant species, size class, common understory, successional stage, presence of invasive species. Essentially, the same attributes that were, were recorded for forest conservation easements. However, this, they, for these sites, there was a qualitative description that captured all of these. And the reason, the, one of the main reasons for that is the variability between these 41 sites. They ranged from small neighborhood parks to several acres large city owned forests. Included in this is also athletic fields, green spaces, city facilities. So, there's just some difficulty in trying to compare one to the other because they, they vary so different, and they vary so widely, rather. And so, here's a graphic trying to capture that quality assessment again. And for this graphic, the 36% are essentially the high quality rating that we, that we saw in the forest conservation easement data. To get this, get to get within that 36%, the description had, had to be totally positive, without qualification. The remaining 64% are the low and mid-range is the one we think about it. It's, it's the, the, the city facilities that had poor quality for, forest assets, but then also ones that were good but needed some intervention. So, so it's not as bad as it looks, is what I'm saying. There are, there are some good things out there, but it's just hard to compare one to the other.
So, that's basically a lot of data the council's been provided, the memo that we did that gets even more into the weeds. So, next steps?
Into the tree, into the forest.
Yes, definitely. So, the whole reason we did this was not just to do an academic exercise, but, but to be able to use it. So, the various departments throughout the city are going to be using this for enhancement, replacement, expansion. And the inventories provide staff the ability to review our various forestry efforts and holistically and comprehensively, you know, begin to plan. You may remember with our Forest Conservation Fund, we're sort of limited in the use, but we did budget money for replacement enhancements and we're very pleased tonight to, to let you guys know that we've partnered with Money Branch Alliance and in fact, we're doing our first enhancement and replacement project beginning in November. It's a small scale, but it's a start, but we will be funding the purchase of the plant materials and they will be doing the labor. So, it's an area that was hard to see at the scale of this map, but, but using this, it was one of the areas that needed work. So, it's going to be involving a lot of invasive removal and then backfilling with plants. But that's just not the only thing. So, part of the main things in what we wanted to show you is actually Arbor Pro. So, this is our asset management software and sort of what was shown is each one of these dots is every single tree that was captured. So, if we click on it, this is what our DPW, Mark Coburn's crew is going to be doing. So, this is the baseline data that was captured that, that Andrew, you know, synthesized down into the various charts. I think the important thing to notice here is what he was mentioning. If we come across a bad tree, we can actually take a photo of that tree, upload it, and it's right here. The documents, nothing yet, but you can put notes. But then the map, it does a central map, so on its own, we can show where. But then the map, it does a central map, so on its own, we can show where that individual tree is. Um, work history. So as, as our DPW crews go through and manage street trees, they'll be able to do real-time tracking. Work using ArborPro should begin this fall. We are just waiting on the laptop computers to outfit our trucks. So it'll be real-time working with this. So this is why it was important for us to have the complete baseline inventory. Um, while we, Andrew did mention that we captured all the street trees. Well, if our goal is to increase our canopy coverage, we also wanna have a sense of what's going on so we can work with our HOAs, and if we use funds or grant programs, that we can work with our state and county partners on their roads. They may not be aware that they don't have decent trees. So this was important to us, and this is real-world how this is going to be used. Now, with this, we sort of jumped into this area. So this area here is actually a forest conservation easement. And in here are those subplots that Andrew was discussing. Um, these plots are very important because we actually have them GPS these points because our goal is to follow with what we talked about in the environment sustainability element. And once we had the baseline, staff taken upon the responsibility every five years. So we'll be able to go back and go to the exact same point that they captured to do an assessment on those areas that we're doing enhancement to see how it works. So when we click on that, all the area that we saw before, the map, but the important thing here is it also has the documents. So this is all the background information, again, for that specific plot area. So it's all those parameters that we wanted to get in the study. And then, of course, again, it's the map, so we know specifically. So again, it's, this is important to us because it shows not only the easements, but it, it allows us in five years or every three years or whatever to go back and see what sort of progress are we actually making. Now, I think one of the important things to note too is real-world pictures of, of the plot area so we can sort of see what's going on. So while the street trees, they didn't take pictures of every single street tree. Every easement area and plot that they went into, they actually captured photographs to sort of give us a representation of what's going on. So that's really ArborPro. As I said, we're very excited to make full use of it now and from a multiple of departments. Um, we're working with, like our stormwater management team, one of the things we're doing is, um, the county with their, um, road expansion farther up here, you know, had to do some one-to-one replacement using our ArborPro data we looked in. And they're actually funding our reforestation effort as part of the stream restoration over by Medimmune. So the county's actually gonna be paying for the reforestation. So another tie-in to this is how this works with GIS. So basically, Andrew and Jan and Justin in IT have worked to actually transfer the ArborPro data into GIS. So while ArborPro's a licensed thing, everybody now has access. So what you're seeing on here is actually the easement layer. And, and this goes beyond just category ones. This is a tree save area, and we have another color just for the category two easements. And category two easements are your old traditional tree save areas. You can mulch underneath, you can mow all of that, but you're really just keeping trunk out. It's not meant to be, you know, a natural forest. Um, the thing that does differ with this is when you click on these easements, this gives another advantage. This gives the labyrinth folio of where the actual legal easement is recorded. It gives the original site plan that established the forest conservation easement, gives the site plan name, and any other attributes we may wanna add going forward. Um, clicking on the street trees, the individual street trees, it carries over, um, the base stuff coming from ArborPro. Now, this is something, you know, as ArborPro i- is updated real-world in the, in the year, you know, we may have to work with IT once or twice a year to migrate all of that data because it's, it's not as simple as, as just, you know, you put it in one, it automatically goes to the other. Um, the other thing that's important to note about this, you know, using our forest conservation funds this past budget year, we purchased a GPS system. So when new projects come in, um, one of our jobs, working with our friends in DPW, our responsibility is to field map all the new street trees and easements coming in to set it up for them, so that all they have to do is from the maintenance side. So, I, again, we're very pleased with the study. For the most part, we're pleased with the results of the study. Um, it gives us a, a direction to project plan and better budget, um, and to target specific areas. Um, it opens up opportunities to partner with groups like Muddy Branch Alliance to get work done. And, and overall, you know, we're very pleased, and hopefully you are too. You guys authorized the fifty-eight thousand dollars for us to do this. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I think for the cost of fifty-eight thousand dollars, this is pretty awesome. Uh, I'm looking at this as, as, um, our ability as, as planning staff, environmental staff, stormwater staff to govern smarter and be more deliberate and, uh, help guide decisions and shape, uh, planning recommendations and reforestation guidelines that we give to, uh, both the private sector and the public. I think it's awesome. I'm really excited about what, what you've done. On a side note, um, I actually read a lot of the, the, the fine print of this, of this presentation and, and think that, Andrew, I don't know if you're the one who wrote it, but whoever, whoever did the writing here did a very good job. It's readable to somebody like me who is not, uh, an arborist, to say the least. Um, I can inadvertently kill almost all plant life when I'm doing, when I'm working at home. Um, but I just wanna say I appreciate your work. And I'm, I'm really excited about how it all fits into, to GIS. Um, I couldn't be more excited about this, so I really appreciate all your work on it. Questions, comments, event?
Um, thank you guys for your presentation. And I too, thought I read the fine print as well, and so it was perfect for me. I just had one quick question. Um, for the trees that are poor and critical, what are your, how do you make the decision to get rid of them or to restore them or, I just was curious?
Well, this is, you know, now that we actually know where they are, you know, we are working with, you know, the Marx, Mark Cober and Mark Scaffudi over at DPW because they normally replace, on average, a hundred trees a year. But now we can sort of work with them now that we know where everything is and it's not waiting for a phone call, to move those up in the hopper for replacement. So that's why, again, this is helping us because now we're, we're better targeting upfront on the street tree front, you know, priority, prioritizing removals.
Neil?
So, um, first of all, th- this is great. And I remember when you first presented the concept of doing this, it, uh, it seemed like a good idea and a good way to really quantify and measure what's out there and what needs to be done so that we can prepare and plan better in the future. So much like the survey we did of the, of the roadway conditions, I think it's a really important tool for the city to use to, to be more cost-effective and make things better. Um, curious about one little thing, and it's not the most important thing, I'm just curious. Uh, with GIS, we have some GIS maps that are available to the public on the website.
We are working right now to make sure, one of our goals was to work with Jan to make the easement layer public. So there's still some backdoor work going through IT because we feel it's very important. Because some people don't even know these easements exist.
Street trees as well?
Um, we, we, we can discuss that.
Just curious, it might be useful because I know some citizens have, have reached out to me as constituent service type situations where there's a tree with an issue, and then I've reported it back. It might be a nice feature, again, not the, not the most critical thing. So for somebody to be able to look at the map and click and say, this tree's got an issue, and have some sort of automated reporting system. Just throwing it out there as long as it's, you know, as long as the data's all in the, out there in the cloud somewhere. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I'll echo what everyone has said about how needed it is to have this baseline of data and these features that will be available to staff and, uh, to some extent to the public as well. Um, and it's always great to see as we continue to build layers on our G, public GIS system. As the public gets, and I would say as, venture to say, as those of us here on the day is get more educated about, um, this issue and the importance of, of managing, um, a tree canopy and types of trees and tree diversity and all the things that you presented about so well. Um, I'm sort of curious, even though I know that the study was really focused on, um, public street trees and easements, to what extent we can extrapolate from the findings of this to create recommendations for the private sector to say, hey, even though we didn't do a full, um, you know, accounting of, of what trees are out there, you know, on private properties in the city, it's a good idea to plant X and not a good idea to plant Y. Um, are we not quite there yet? Or do you think we can make some, uh, some, we can draw some conclusions from some of this? To, you know, if folks come to the city website and they wanna know what's a good kind of tree to plant in their backyard, um, are we able to tell them, don't plant maple if you can help it? Or, or, or is it not fair to jump to that sort of, uh, uh, fact conclusion given that we haven't really studied what's going on on private property?
We're, we're sort of i- in another world to describe. Obviously now, in our review of forest conservation and landscape planners for new projects coming in, Andrew especially, we're, we're very sensitive about trying to diversify and get away from the old standard pin oaks and maples because, partially because of this data. Um, for private homeownership for, for a number of years now, it used to be on our website, you know, we had links to some of the state documents, right tree, right place. It's, it's very difficult to, to speak contextually. Um, we're always open, especially when we, because, you know, we handle the tree removal permits. So oftentimes when people ask, you know, what should we replant with? We sort of ask, what are you looking to get out of it? Um, you know, obviously, certain trees are nice, but they're very expensive. Or people like ornamentals and they're, they're not gonna serve what they want. But some people have fears of large trees, you know, falling on their house. So a- again, it's, it's working with the homeowners to, for them to get a better understanding contextually of what they like. We can recommend against specific species. And, and we have done that, I mean, for, for most of my time here. You know, we've tried to dissuade people from doing white pines. They used to be sort of the lazy man's landscape and that they grew fast and, and, you know, buffered quick, but they're also structurally unstable and susceptible to wind throws. So we're sort of trying to get away from those. So, you know, we've been doing that for a while, but because of the breadth of development that's occurred over decades and where we have a neighborhood such as behind us that has native old trees, so many were landscaped and they're sort of reflective of what the landscaping tastes were at the time development came in. Um, there, there's no rhyme or reason to how things go. But a- as I said, going forward, as we review plans, obviously, we're, we're taking into account the data here. Obviously, you know, we're not gonna recommend any ash trees with the emerald ash for. So, you know, we're sort of getting away from that. And for a while, obviously elm and Dutch elm disease was big, you know, we, we would recommend people, you know, even preemptively remove those trees if possible from their properties and, and find another large shade tree.
Yeah, so I, you know, similar issues. You know, we talk about invasive species and, uh, invasive usually means is, is, uh, related to unwanted or ugly or something like that. That's not always the case. Invasive species end up often being planted by somebody because they thought the tree was gonna look nice and it's just not a, uh, native species. So I think, um, it would be good to know a little bit more about that. I think it would be good, once we come up with, uh, the types of trees that are recommended for, for private property throughout the city, probably to work with the, the local nurseries and, and big box stores that sell, that have nurseries that sell trees is to, is to have, um, a list where they can suggest to homeowners and perhaps even stock the trees that, that would, that might be recommended, I think. You know, we have a lot of maple trees because I think that, at least in, in my neighborhood and who I've seen in, in other places, um, you know, they grow reasonably fast. Uh, some of them get pretty trashy, but, you know, in a few years, you got a lot of shade in them from a maple tree. So, um, so I think developers at, at the time were putting those in because of the, how quickly they grow. And certainly that explains quite a bit of the coverage, so. It's just, you know, anyway. I think whatever guidance we can provide to, to private property owners, uh, on, on the types of trees to use and to also, uh, let them know what we consider, or what the state, I guess, that, uh, considers to be invasive and why we'd rather not have invasive species in them.
And to your point, I don't know if I mentioned it during the presentation, but that is one of, the availability is one of the challenges to keeping strong diversity or high diversity.
Yeah. But I, you know, if, even if we advised those companies that sell trees that, you know, don't stock invasive species.
Well.
But then there are plenty that just grow from seed that are carried by.
People love their Japanese maples and dogwoods. Well, and then sometimes the issue is that we don't know that it's invasive or it's not invasive until it reaches a critical mass. And then that, then that's where it begins to spread so aggressively.
No, I think people would be disappointed to know that they're red buds, dogwoods. And, and Japanese maples are considered invasive species because they're used, you know, for landscaping. You know, the last tree I planted and had planted in our yard was a dogwood to replace the dogwood that we, we had to take down because it was diseased, so. Most people don't consider those invasive, you know, so, but they don't know. It's, it's the definition of what's invasive, so.
Rob?
I just echo everyone's comments. It was a great, great presentation, uh, great overview. It really helped me see the forest through the trees.
He's been working on that.
Yes, I've been waiting for that one.
Do you use it, right?
Um, it would. I, I think Ryan struck a good chord there on where do we go from here? What u- utility can we extrapolate from the data beyond what we've already got? The more useful the data and the more applications, the better bang for a dollar. Question, we own the data? Okay, so then we're probably better than the federal government because they go out and contract and the contractor owns the data. And they charge us back for it. But, um.
Stop letting that happen, please.
We try. Um, it was good to hear about the, the partnership with the Muddy Branch Alliance. I think that's the Turtle Pond project.
Yeah.
So it's good to see that there. I was actually wondering how the city got involved with, with Muddy Branch Alliance, um, on that specific project. I'd be interested in seeing how we can make, um, those types of reforestation projects more available to other groups. Um, for example, some of the, the environment, the, the easements that have less than stellar marks are in my neighborhood. I know some of my folks are interested in, um, you know, we're doing trail work in one of the city parks and Andrew came out and helped us out with that. But we've also got, um, folks that are walking their dogs right next to these tree areas. Uh, we wanna make sure they're healthy, we wanna make sure that they remain healthy. And I, I haven't cleared this through my neighborhood yet, but, you know, if you need manpower to help make these things healthy, I volunteer my community. But thank you.
All right. Um, is there anybody from the public who'd like to offer comment or ask questions here? Not seeing anything from the public. Do you all feel that you get everything you need from us? You feel guided?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, well then, is there anything from any other staff? Since we have a number of staff there. Okay, not seeing anything, then I will remind you.
Neil, a quick point.
Please?
For those of you who are viewing at home, um, the, the presentations that you saw tonight are all available as a, a downloadable documents from the city's website. And there's some additional information tacked onto the end. Um, there's a monthly report from city staff with, with all kinds of useful data on what the city is up to. So in case you're curious or wanna look over our shoulder, um, there's, there's always useful data there. There's more than just what you see on the, on the TV or on the YouTube.
All right, good point. Um, so as, just as a reminder, the book festival has a terrific event coming up tomorrow night at Gaithersburg High School, seven PM with Chimamanda Adichie, who is a tremendous author, winner of the MacArthur Genius Grant, uh, National Book Critics Circle. And I can go on, but that's it, uh, seven PM. Doors open at six, it's gonna be packed, so I recommend if you're coming, uh, come early. And, and just a, a quick note about that, it does, they did have registration open for this event, although it wasn't tied to seating, and the registration is closed, but don't let that fool you. It is a first-come, first-served event, so come early and you'll get a seat. Um, and then the next regular meeting of Mayor Council is next week, next Monday, seven-thirty PM, right here. Uh, until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.